All right, I'm gonna kick off really. I'd like to call the two order in the regular meeting of the Bogota Board of Education, which is there December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three into order, please stand for the flag. Pleasant to reply, United States of America, to the Republican who stands for the nation under our individual's vote. Thank you for all the questions this evening. The New Jersey Open Block Meeting Law was the back switch for the right of the public to have an advance noted out and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Bogota Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date and time and place there posted in the Bogota Board Hall, communicated by letter to the record, filed with the clerk of the borough of Bogota, and posted on the Bogota Board of Education website. Uh, Erfa?
Mrs. Alvarez. Mr. Alvarez.
Present.
Mr. Chavez.
Present.
Mrs. Cruz.
Present.
Mr. Navarro.
Present.
Mrs. Solivo absent. Mr. Ortega. Mrs. Ruckett.
Present.
Mr. Miranda.
Said.
Motion carried.
For the record.
We have the court.
Mrs. Solivo could not make it, she notified. Also present is Superintendent Damien Kennedy, or Attorney Thomas Coben, School Business Administrator, Board Secretary Erfa Hemstel, and Assistant Board Secretary Elizabeth Ruiz. Also, we have a special guest, student representative Ashton Poreña, welcome this evening. Um, I'd like to get a motion to open up the floor on hearing of the citizens on agenda items only, do you have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Chavez, do I have a second?
Alvarez.
Mr. Alvarez, any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there any member of the public who would like to address agenda items only? At this moment, you'll have a second chance on anything at the end, you have five minutes, please state your name, the street address, online as well. Anyone, Kennedy? Is there anyone present?
No one's raising their hand.
No one?
No.
So I'm gonna move, uh, I have a motion to close hearing of agenda items only.
Motion.
Mrs. Ruckett, do you have a second?
Alvarez.
Mr. Alvarez, any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, moving on to section three, one, Agenda Superintendent's Report, Mr. Kennedy?
Good evening, uh, before we start our report, I'm gonna ask our student rep Ashley to give her report.
Good evening to all, my name is Ashley Urina, and I'm the Student Council President and Student Representative here today. Before I say anything, I wanna, I want to thank Mr. Kennedy for inviting me to this meeting. Due to my absence at the past meetings, I will be touching on a lot of subjects, but won't take up too much of your time, I promise. In the last few months, we have had a lot of highs, including our homecoming dance, the fall sports pep rally, and the commencement of our winter sports. I hope that we all have a great year moving forward and have a safe break.
Thank you very much. For my report, first, we had two HIB cases reported at Steen School, one was founded. Uh, we will be adding a new fourth grade classroom to Steen, uh, bringing our number up to three fourth grade classrooms over the last couple of weeks, we've gotten an influx of students. So our numbers continue to grow, uh, monthly. So we will be looking to do a district-wide redistricts, re-registration process uh, in the, during the summer to confirm that all students are residing in Bogota. So I have talked to a couple of different superintendents, have done the process in the last couple of years, uh, and they have confirmed that they have caught, you know, between twenty to fifty, depending on the district size, so uh, we are packed to the gills, so we wanna make sure that everyone, um, that's going to our schools is living in Bogota. Uh, congratulations to Mrs. Hughes and the students at BHS for their performance in radium girls. Anyone was able to get to the performance, they did a great job. Also, great job by the high school students and Mr. Abraham at the winter concert last Friday. Also, kudos to Mrs., uh, Dr. Paz and the BHS team for putting together the eighth grade dance. From what I heard, they had a great time and, and, uh, the students and the parents were raving about it. Also, as we speak, vape detectors are being installed in the high school and in the middle school. By the end of this week, we will have a total of fifteen vape detectors and in the high school and eight in the middle school. So this is just a deterrent from our students. We wanna make sure that our locker rooms and, and our bathrooms are, are safe and healthy for students to go into them, and the detectors do work, uh, very well and alerts administration if, uh, any vape detection or smoking is happening in that bathroom, so this is what we have to do. Also, thanks for the PTO and their hard work and generosity over the last couple of weeks. They have put on many different programs, so I want to publicly thank them for all the work that they do in all four of our schools. Uh, tonight, um, we say goodbye to Mr. John Ortega, uh, who has been with the board for the last three years. Uh, I've had the opportunity to know John since he was in the seventh grade and, uh, watch him grow, so it's been a, uh, great experience for me to see a former student, uh, now that I can consider a friend and a colleague, so we would like to wish him luck in his future endeavors. And lastly, uh, we had the arborist, Miss Elizabeth Stewart, walk the fields early this month to give recommendation on the tree situation at the fields, and right now we have her virtually, so we're gonna invite her to give that report, uh, to the public.
Hi, my name is Liz Stewart, um, I'm a New Jersey licensed tree expert, and I was asked to give a report on all the trees, the condition of the trees in the field area. Um, and I used the, um, the survey that was given to me. Um, did everyone receive the report? Okay. Um, I mean, in general, there were thirty-six trees identified, and out of those thirty-six trees, even without the construction, twenty-nine of them were really recommended for removal just because of their poor condition and because they are in a park area. So the construction, um, plans showed that those trees should be removed anyway because of the site changes, and they should just be removed because of their condition on top of that, so that all works out. There were seven additional trees that were in good condition, but because of site changes, four of them, I think, are slated to be removed, and these were smaller tree, trees under ten-inch DBH, which is about this, this big, um, they're much smaller trees, they've probably only been there maybe for under ten years. So they're not significant losses to the area. And with your planting plan, um, on the plants, there are about thirty trees being replanted in both field areas, which covers the removal of this, of these trees as far as canopy cover goes. So you're in pretty good shape with your tree plan and your, uh, remove-on-replacement plan.
I guess anyone from the board has any questions, and I guess we can open up to the public if anyone has a question while we have the expert here.
Um, anyone on the board? Why don't we open up?
Yeah.
Yeah, right?
You need a motion.
All right, I'll take a motion to open up the floor.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Have a row.
The barrels, motion, Chavez, second, the barrel, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Does anyone who would like to address our professional license of a person? Um, please state your name and street address, you have five minutes.
No, uh, Danielle Feedy. Nice to see you, Liz.
Hi, how are you?
I'm kinda surprised that Liz was selected as the Board of Education's, um, arborist because Liz is actually the borough's arborist, and the way I understood it from the planning board meeting was that the company, and name escapes me now, the engineering firm that's been doing all your plans, um, said that they had a landscape architect and that they were gonna do the plan, and then Liz was gonna look at it on behalf of the borough. So I'm kinda surprised that Liz has done the work on behalf of the Board of Education because she's the one that did the work on behalf of the borough, was supposed to peer review what the board was gonna do, so I'm a little bit surprised by, by it, but I know and trust Liz. Um, I have a question about the weeping willows. Um, Liz had said that twenty-nine of the trees, and I haven't seen the report, and I didn't see it on the website, and could you maybe post that on the website? Twenty-nine of the trees are recommended for removal, seven in good condition, and she said several were, um, not that significant size, but need to be moved because of the grade change. Were those the weeping willows along the side of the, of the park is my question, because even though they may not be deemed significant, there really isn't gonna be anything left. If there's gonna be fields, soccer fields, baseball fields, what's, what's gonna be left, uh, after, after all these trees are removed? Thank you.
Yeah, so I found three weeping willows that were younger, I think Danielle, that's what you're talking about, on the side. Um, fourteen-inch, a twenty-inch, and an eighteen-inch. They were not in good condition, when you go up to them, they have burr holes all throughout them, they have some broken branches, and not that, they were in fair condition, I put in my report. Um, because of this construction, they are going to try to do, they're trying to save these three trees, and it will depend on where this path is going and what the, um, site conditions, what changes there will be. So those are remaining for now. Um, as construction goes, they may need to change that, but also they're not in very good condition. I expect that they have a limited life expectancy of maybe another ten years, or if they do live out their natural life, they're gonna have problems, they're gonna have broken branches, they're not gonna be great specimens just because of the condition they're in now. Um, unfortunately. Um, and I don't know if, to answer your question of why I'm doing this project, Ed Heinz had recommended me to the board because there were some trees that were borough trees and some that were on the property, so he had recommended me, so I don't, uh, that's as far as I know. As why I'm, I was doing the tree evaluation.
Are you also evaluating the replacement plan so that weeping willows will, um, be placed?
Yeah, the replacement plan, I think you'd be happy with, it's very good, they have, um, natural species going in, they have thirty trees, but they, after we did the walkthrough, before I did the tree evaluation, they said that there is room to add in, especially because there were maybe two or three trees on this plan that were slated to stay, and I feel like they should be removed because they're not in good condition, they have significant cracks and decay in them, and this is a field area that's gonna be used by a lot of people, and there are going to be significant grading changes. So as far as safety is concerned, I'm doing a risk assessment, um, and I did not feel like they were safe in a park area.
So that's twenty-five trees?
Uh, no, the twenty, so those three willows, are you speaking about the willow trees?
No, the plan that was presented had removal of twenty-two trees, and now you're saying-
Yeah, so I, I found twenty-nine trees to be removed. And I evaluated thirty-six trees, there, um, there were some other trees on the plans that, that were not on the plans when I first walked the site, but will be within the area of construction.
Okay, I've just said, we were presented with a plan that showed X's, twenty, twenty-two X's. Okay, so now you're saying that's-
So that was, that was the architect's plan, and now the arborist is presenting her plan, so that's, the original plan was from our architects, and that's when we were, um, asked to have a professional walk it, and that's why she is presenting this new plan. So this will all be updated on the website tomorrow, I wanted to present it out tonight, but this is, from what we did and what she wa, what she feels is the best thing to do is where we're at right now.
No, and you understand, Mr. Kennedy, why I'm surprised, because we, I was at the planning board meeting that you are at, and it was, it was, the testimony was that your, the company that's representing the board had that expertise.
Well, let me, let me interject, Mrs. Feedy. The exact question that you posed was, who is your profession? Um, as a planning and zoning member. Uh, the architect and the engineer said we utilized in some way, shape, or form a landscaping company. Your response was very clear, they're not licensed arborists. That, those were your words. We, as a board, as administration, then, and, and the engineer and architect said, then we'll speak to your, your profession, right, what to satisfy that need. Mr. Kennedy reached out to your borough administrator, and he asked, who is your profession, your arborist? Because I would assume since it was borough property, you would probably want the, the opinion of a professional you've utilized and trust, as you just stated, prior to starting your questions. When that transpired, actually, it went as far as what the bill will look like, and the the Board of Ed decided to just pay the bill so that we could satisfy the planning and zoning inclusive of your remarks, and that's how this professional signed.
Good, so the Board of Education paid for Ms. Stewart's-
That is correct. To satisfy your request.
Right, thank you, it's just that the, the, my understanding in that meeting was that the, I'm sorry, the woman's name escapes me, the gentleman's name escapes-
It was some sort of landscaping, and I-
They said that they had, they said, they said that they had a licensed landscaped architect in-house, and so-
I went for you, you were interrogated, not a licensed architect, right?
Right.
And that's-
Right, but now-
So we went a step further to satisfy your needs.
But I think also at the council meeting, they made it very clear that they wanted their arborists to walk the fields, that was stated several times.
Right, right.
I think if we go back to the recommendations that closed out that, that, uh, zoning meeting, it was built into the recommendations that we seek out the advice of the town arborist, and I regret that, because I was surprised.
I'm just, I'm just gonna say for the record, my recollection was that the Board of Education was going to hire somebody, and the town arborist was going to peer review it, but it's, 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 it's done, and that's fine. I just, I'm just surprised, I'm just surprised.
Best of-
You know, as, as a member of the planning board, a member of the environmental commission, I'm not here as, as either tonight, I'm just surprised that this transpired. But you know what? Liz is certified, she knows what she's doing, and I'll be happy to look at her report, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I, just for the record, I think we're doing the right thing by consulting the professionals of the borough so that it's not, you know, subjective to all in the opinion of the Board of Education. We're using professionals from the borough, which at the end of the day, it's one taxpayer base. Put it how you wanna name it, but it's the facts. So we're, we're hiring the professionals that the borough already relying, trusted on to guide us in the process for the entire tax base of Bogota.
Lisa Cole, three eighty-five River Road. Um, I'm just asking personally, going forward, if we could, after the new year is, you know, pre-ord, if the Board of Ed could walk with the council members and the mayor and just point out what trees are being taken down and what, you know, what's staying up, so we get a little bit of, you know, honestly, I don't really know what trees are being taken down, I just wanna take a peek at it and just, you know.
Of course.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Just said, the trees are all tagged too, there is a metal tag in each tree, and it, um, each number correlates with the tree on the report, just to make it easy for anyone walking the site.
Thank you so much, that, that really helps.
Yeah, yeah.
Mrs. Harper?
Yes, hi. Um, so can you hear me?
Yes.
So basically, then, what you're saying is, I guess based upon the math here, you have, you said that you counted thirty-five trees, twenty-nine you recommended for removal, right? So that leaves a six, you said the four are slated for removal, so basically, there's gonna be two trees left, right?
There were thirty-six trees total that I inventoried, um, twenty-nine are being removed, so that leaves seven trees. Um, seven trees that in my report were in good or fair condition, the rest were in poor or dead condition. Um, the three willow trees are staying as far as the plans go because they will not be affected as much by the site construction, but they may need to be removed at some point. There are four trees on the end of the site, um, that are going to be affected by significant grade changes. These trees will probably struggle and, and be in very poor condition in the next five or ten years. So for a large project like this, I don't know any arborist that would keep any of these trees, honestly, because of the condition that they're in, and I would be happy to walk the site with, you know, if you wanna have a meeting, that's fine. Um, but they, the replacement plan is, is more than compensating for what's being lost, and it seems to me, just from walking this area, these trees have not, they've been here for a long time, and there's been no replacement. And that's why it seems like there's such a big loss, because there have not been a lot of replacements to compensate for these trees aging out, and that's what they've done, they've aged out, they've lost significant branches, they're very decayed on top, they're, they're older trees that have weak wood anyway. Uh, so they're, they've lived out their lifespan, and, um, the replacements should provide, um, coverage in the future, moving forward.
Uh-huh, so how many trees are you saying are gonna be left? Because you've given lots of-
I think there's, there's still a little bit back and forth between these seven trees. Four, uh, three trees are on the plans as staying, three willow trees that are in fair condition. Um, there are four trees on the end of the site that, that are going through significant grading changes, and on the plans, two of them are removals. I don't know if anything's changing with the plans to be able to keep them, but also they're not, you, they're already, with those changes, they, they probably are not going to do well or survive. Um, also, they're maple, three of them are maples, and the maples in our area are not surviving. They're, they have significant, um, health issues right now, um, so replacing them with species of trees that are thriving right now is not a bad plan.
Mm-hmm, so I, I guess, I guess, so I guess I'm, I'm still not clear, so you're saying maybe three willow trees and, or maybe four other trees according to the, the gradient. So basically, it doesn't sound like, it really sounds like that there may be just three weeping willow trees, and that's it. And the rest of the trees are all gonna be cut down, so this is a wholesale cut down of the entire park. Now, I've been living behind this park for many years now, and the trees bloom, there's lots of, you know, there's, there's, there's activity happening in this, you know, with all these different trees. So, you know, while I do understand, I, and I agree with you, there hasn't been much replacement in this town. There's been a lot of neglect on that park, that's sad, you know, for a park, I mean, a park should have, should have some, but I mean, I just, I find that that's very, it's, it's very sad, it's a very sad day in Bogota to have to chop down your, all your entire park trees.
There are two buffers, which I did not mention, I kind of grouped them into just two areas, so, um, there are two areas on the plans which I should have mentioned, um, and they are on the property where the houses are on that side of the park, those are staying. Um, anything in there, there is a path going along the backyards, and anything that's overhanging that may be dead or, um, just needs a pruning, um, those, that, those areas are staying. So there are quite a few trees in those two areas.
Um, so you're saying that along the, the trees along first base, the trees along first base, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I, I don't know, I find it's interesting that you're saying that they're staying and they're not staying, you're just making recommendations, but you're, you're, but you're seeing, you sound like you're making, you're saying that they're staying or not saying, so. But, so you're saying the trees that are behind our homes, the ones that are behind our homes, so the one that's behind the, the, the baseball field, the home plate, there's a tree right behind my house. There's a huge tree right next to it, and the house right next to it.
Ms. Harper, from my understanding and looking at it, where we looked at where the containers were, those trees were mostly staying, remember we walked that line? And then on the corner, the other corner, those trees are staying as well.
Yeah.
I think the trees that we were trying to keep were the, the ones along the, um, third baseline of the softball field near the road, there was a couple, there was three or four trees there, those are being recommended by Mrs. Stewart to come down.
Right, the other, the other weeping willow, the other weeping willow. There's another weeping willow, there's a second, that's the weeping-
A, a mature-
Large weeping willow.
Yes, that tree is in significant decline and has, um, it has several cankers, it has active fungal growths going up the trunk with a split, there's a mushroom growing at the, um, the crotch of the tree, and that's a very dangerous situation, actually, like that tree is hollow and decaying inside. So the, these trees would be fine in an area where there is not a lot of activity, in a more natural setting. These trees would be better in that area, but along a walking path, um, there's, there's a lot of, there are a lot of signs of large branches already breaking off of these trees, and as an arborist, I was asked to do a risk assessment. And when there's a significant target, um, and a significant, um, defect in a tree, I have to say that that tree has to be removed.
Right.
You know, that's, and, and I love trees, I do, I love trees, and I am not an alarmist as an arborist, I think a lot of my arborists, um, people who are arborists do take trees down before I do, so I have to say, I, I do try to keep trees when I can.
Thank you, Mrs. Stewart.
I, I would like to just to make one last comment, too, just to follow, to follow, to follow up, to follow up on Danielle Fetti's comment, the fact- I agree as well.
I have.
I agree as well, I agree as well with Danielle Fetti with respect to the fact that we were under the impression that the town itself was going to be, uh, commissioning Liz, um, you know, for their own report, and not, and not that it was going to be commissioned through the Board of Ed. Um, because of the fact that there was a lot of inconsistency.
Mrs. Harper, I, I have to cut you off, it's not fair to-
Thank you, goodbye.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Uh, you know, actually, I'd like to say something.
We'll, we'll open them up. Okay. Anyone else? All right, can I have a motion to close?
Alvarez.
Mrs. Alvarez, Mr. Alvarez is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Alvarez?
Well, uh, what I wanted to say was that these fields, uh, uh, you know, although it's a park, it is fields of play for the children, they're uh, two softball, uh, two baseball fields, a football field. So, uh, I mean, I don't know how many of us actually use those fields and play on those fields. Um, I mean, I do, I play softball on, on the one field, I, I'm looking forward to running on the track on the football field, and at this point, i- it's, you know, we're making a change, we're making a, a huge change for the, the, the better of the kids of the park, of the field, um, so i- it is gonna require some change. Uh, also, I think, you know, getting the, the arborist that is, you know, work, that, that, uh, that knows, especially like working with the, um, with, with the, the borough, I mean, it, it kind of go, goes right to the point and eliminates having to get two, three people, uh, we're, we're getting the, the person that, you know, we, we would be consulting with anyway. So I, I, I think, you know, we need to think about what would be good for the kids and, and these parks and the renovations, it's, i- it's good for the town, it's good for the kids, and I mean, to make it more complicated over a few trees, I, I just, I, 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 I think we need to allow for the change. That's what I wanted to say.
I, I do wanna thank Mrs. Stewart, but I think to be very clear, Mrs. Stewart, didn't, didn't the architect send someone that was an arborist as well to walk with you, who else was with you that year?
They sent their landscape architect, and just to be clear, in New Jersey, to evaluate trees, you must be a licensed tree expert, you're licensed with the state, you can't be a landscape architect to evaluate trees, it's a whole different thing, so. Um, yeah, I went, I walked with the landscape architect just to get an idea of what the plans were, um, and then I did my report, and my report would have been the same no matter who hires me.
Mrs. Stewart, thank you for your professionalism, I wanna make it very clear that at the end of the day, the taxpayer informed the bill, it really shouldn't matter of who they, who was hired, it was recommended by the borough administrator, so it's just a bunch of shenanigans about who brought it and what brought it, we satisfy the needs of the planning and zoning board, if you had any real concerns, you should have brought it up seven, eight, a year ago, when this started transpiring, the discussion, and the people have had concerns for months at the borough and council, and no one offered it to the planning and zoning board, made a suggestion, we took the suggestion and we executed accordingly. It's not our fault that we executed things, the letter, the letter of the way things should be done, so for it to come up now, it doesn't matter who paid the bill, we hired the professional, the one that's trusted to the borough, as was said by Mrs. Feedy, and it was done, this is your report, and we will not question your report, we appreciate it. However, you can trust that we too like trees, and we would do whatever it takes to replace trees, because let's not kid ourselves, to Mr. Rob Alvarez's point, you call it a park, they're fields, ninety-eight percent of the park are fields, and we're giving the borough an opportunity to finally have something they could never have done. Thank you. So we're moving on?
Someone has their hand raised, but I think we're already closed.
Yeah, we closed.
So bring it back.
So Mr. Lopez, at the end of the meeting, will be another chance to speak, uh, just FYI.
You know, for the record, let's just be very clear, right, because a lot of people tend to show up, the media shows up randomly when it all shows up. On September twenty-twenty-second, we put out a trifle, right, we put out brochures, it was all just basically conceptual, right, it was all conceptual. On January nineteenth, we presented to the Bogota Council, Mayor Council, stating that we have budgeted for- On January nineteenth, we presented to the Bogota Council, Mayor Council, stating that we have budgeted for turf field just for the little portion of the baseball fields. However, some people had concerns. There was some back and forth. Um, you could do turf on your side, do grass on this side. And then we, you know, when we got to the synopsis of it and we started digging deep, we always said it was a concept. We needed D U P approval. We needed to understand the flooding. We needed to understand the elevation. We were, we were just stuck on a little piece of turf. However, the board recognized that the flooding would prevent us from possibly going through headaches. When it came to turf, right? Because on the football side, we can go turf. We're up to the elevation level or just a bit over. However, in the baseball side, um, meaning the verbal side, we're well below the elevation level. I mean, if we went above and beyond, we'd probably be building a skyscraper, right? Kid you not. So we're, we're well below that level. So that made us to pivot a little bit, pivot a little bit. What do I mean by pivot? We're trying to add lights, we're adding um, drainage system that, that basically it doesn't have. There, there's a man-made, um, and if you really go use the park, there's a man-made drainage. The pipe heads out, uh, you know, maybe two hundred and fifty feet, then it stops. And it goes around three or four trees that divide what we call this, and I'm tired of saying the borough and the, this is the taxpayer view, right? So in between, it divides, we figured out through all, I say we, right? I have no inclusion in, in non-union engineer. But, meaning the professionals, we figured out that it can, it's gonna be redone, it's gonna be directed, it's gonna come over. So we're taking out our big fences and we're gonna beautify it, right? But we could not, we would be risking a lot if we went into turf on the baseball side. So however, we're adding more drainage, we're, you know, they've talked about how it all drains out. I'll, I'll be lying if I tell you I remember every detail. And then we said, hey, we're gonna do the whole park. We're gonna redo a sod, sod was a discussion, right? You see, I think about grass, it was actually sod. Uh, we went back and forth with the planning and zoning board. Um, on February, uh, first, we had a town hall meeting. We said about to say, because, then I'm bringing this up, I'm bringing this up because. An individual said at the planning and zoning board that it was a bait and switch. And that we are basically deceiving our taxpayers, right? The ones who voted for this referendum. Um, however, we've been extremely transparent to the T, what we're saying, how we're saying it, and we rely on our professionals. And I think most of you know, on the committees we drill, our professionals. Then, so we got to that, you know, some members of the council were adamant about whole turf, right? So two, and, 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 and I'm glad, right? They said that because we weren't gonna be able to give it to them. It wouldn't look good to have in the, you know, the, the, the area of the plane would have been grass and then turf. Just imagine a kid running, trying to catch a ball and he went from turf to grass. Some other member asked if we could just do one field and they could share softball and baseball. Well, the bases are different, uh, the mounts are different. There's all different ball game there. Um, you know, that's just fundamental in the sport. You know, on, so February first, we had our, our, here our town hall meetings. And we went over all these details. We talked about a grass option, we talked about the possibilities. It was always just a re-imagination discussion. Concept, re-imagination. Change hurts, or reimagine it too. Right now, what we have and what tax base looks like in Bogota is crap. And we're finally putting something that's gonna appeal to the better nature of the grand public. A member said, an individual said that if taxpayers knew about trees, they would have never voted for the referendum. I highly doubt that. I wish we had a survey go out. Why? Because from the very beginning, I was looking at our notes in some meeting. Another member said we only said eight trees. We actually were hovering around sixteen, eighteen, twenty trees. We never were at eight. We were always in that area. I've, I've, I've seen different videos, it says eighteen and then twenty. We never had the facts, right? And now we have. On March, we, we then went back and we looked at the reimagine and, and, and it's always said concept. We always said there were things we needed. Another planning zoning board member showed up to the mayor and council meeting last week. To just go over a lot of things and intervention and this and that, land swap. There is not a land swap transpired. It's an interlocal agreement. That's how we got the referendum. You read the referendum and how it's spelled out. It never identified turf. We never, it talked about upgrades, it talked about renovations. It, it was a very broad, because we knew, it, it just suddenly have it all plays out, right? You gotta put a referendum out, we really don't know what to get approved. So we, we did that. At the end of the day, Bogota and those who are so concerned about Bogota and these trees is that we have lane fields that are, that are down there. That are simply not adequate for the children, for today's age, for this era, for what's going on. Our fields are gonna have turf gaining, B O, B O E fields. I'll also remind you. When we talked about the grass and the turf, we also were trying to edge out the, the pool parking lot. That was another dramatic moment, right? About the pool parking lot. We always said, we think concept says that we may have to dig into that area. And that was really the discussion that really helped transpire with the borough council, mayor council. When that, we learned after all the surveys, we always said we needed to survey. When we got the approval from the mayor and council and go out and survey, we realized that if I tilted the fields just a bit, voila, we don't touch the parking lot. For the, for the pool, alright? So I hope that that really, really just helps everyone. It's always been a concept. We didn't have all our bells and whistles. Now we do. We, you know, going out, the, the, the planning and zoning board, it was a courtesy review. What that means is they can give some suggestions. They did and we followed the suggestions quickly. Because at the end of the day, the one thing that I'm getting and I know most of you are getting is taxpayers stop you on the street. The ones that so-called are not have voted for these without trees. Where are my fields? I believed in you guys. I believed in the Board of Ed. I don't see anything happening. Well, it's happening. It's happening. We're in the process. We have to respect all taxpayers. I get it. Just unfortunately, and we are gonna try to save trees. And we're gonna try and plant more trees. We hired a professional to satisfy the borough and this is it, alright?
And with all the trees that are coming down, just to be clear, there's even more being put up. So it's a, it's a net positive of trees, correct?
I agree, yeah. And we, we're gonna try to do more. It's, then, you know, it, it, you know, I, I, I. It shocks me, right? Because I hear about the wars that happened with the, the trees and Bogota and, and just the greenery and everything we do. I, I've seen posts and political things go out about how we're replacing trees and we're adding new trees somehow, not in the parks. Not in the parks. They haven't replaced them over the years based on what I just heard. I don't know any better. That's what I heard. So at the end of the day, it sucks that this is all coming up in a moment where we're trying to really make progress in Bogota. In a, in an era that we're trying to satisfy taxpayers, children, sports. We're trying to thrive here, Bogota. Listen, it's up to you at this point. We're trying to thrive. We were able to accomplish it when many people said that referendum wasn't gonna pass. Guess what? The past was flying colors. And we're, here we are. So I, I'm sorry that we had to take down some trees. I'm truly sorry. I, I wouldn't wanna go and play on a field that's pure sun and geese. But, but things have to happen for the better things to come, alright?
Is this the, this map of the trees? Would this be posted on the, on the website?
Yeah, everything's gonna be updated on the website tomorrow. Again, I wanted to wait to, for the arborist to give her report tonight. And then for the board to get all the information. So I do wanna thank Ms. Stewart for coming on. You can log off. You don't wanna sit through this whole meeting.
Okay, thank you. I have to give a tree talk right now, so. Thank you for having me.
Okay, moving on to uh, approval of the minutes for three. For November fourteenth, work meeting, open session, and November twenty-first, regularly public meeting, open session. Do I have a motion to approve four and three?
Motion.
Navarro, do I have a second? Chavez, any more discussion? Ervah.
Mrs. Alvarez. Mr. Alvarez.
Uh, I have to abstain because I wasn't here on November fourteenth.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yeah.
Mrs. Ruckert?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Mr. Alvarez, I know you have seen November fourteen, you were here the twenty-first.
Yes.
So you approved twenty?
Yes.
So for the record, yes. Um, there is no possible policy resolution moving to six twelve in the education.
Oh, actually, I'm sorry. It's the reverse. I was here the fourteenth, not the twenty-first. I've seen for the twenty-first, approve the fourteenth.
So I definitely ready, yeah, twenty-first, yeah, twenty-fourteen. Moving on to resolution seven twelve in the educational section of the agenda.
Six twelve.
I'm sorry, six twelve, which is, uh, consists of six one, eleven. Do I have a motion to approve six twelve?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Chavez.
So Mrs. Rocket for a motion, Chavez for a second, any more discussion? Ervah.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yeah.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yeah.
Mrs. Ruckert?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to resolution seven twelve personnel section, uh, which consists of seven one through seven eleven. Do I have a motion to approve seven twelve? Mrs. Cruz, do I have a second? That was you, Navarro?
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion? Roll call, Ervah.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yeah.
Mr. Alvarez?
Uh, I have to abstain from seven dot three, but I, I approve the rest.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yeah.
Mrs. Ruckert?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to resolution eight twelve in the finance section, which is approved for seven agendas eight one through eight eleven. Do I have a motion to approve eight twelve?
Motion.
Mr. Chavez, do I have a second? Mrs. Alvarez, any discussion? Roll call, Ervah.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yeah.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Mrs. Ruckert?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
There's no buildings and grounds this evening. Um, before I move on to ten one. Make sure I'm doing this. I wanna congratulate Stephanie Fontin, Fontinas? Fontinas, thank you very much, Stephanie. It's our, uh, new vice principal from Bogota High School. We welcomed her with open arms. Um, as you can tell, very passionate, at least I know. I think I see their eyes and thank you, thank you for lying, thank you for making it through. And bring this all the time.
Thank you all. I really appreciate, um, the vote and I'm just worried for being.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Uh, as I say, no buildings and grounds. Is there a committee report this evening? Nope, the old business?
No.
So I'll just make this. Um, last meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, we had a set of parents come up. Uh, to discuss band uniforms when I got all over the fashion and all the noise and everything. Um, we're, we're definitely working on it. The administration for those parents who did come up. Doing a ton of fundraisers. I hope some of you bought, uh, purchased fun cakes, have some waiting downstairs. Uh, pay attention to those fundraiser boards. We need them. Uh, everyone needs them at the school. Uh, the administration has assured that they're working closely with those parents. More importantly, with the educators who are responsible submitting those budgets, um, to work on an outcome. Whether it's some administrative funds and, I mean, you know, some capital funds, some fundraising funds. Um, the one suggestion that, uh, the administration did bring up is that. Back to the fields, we're coming up with coloring, schematics of the fields. And it would be ideal for the band uniforms to match. Look at those fields. I know we, uh, so that you know, we are working on this. We talked about the purples and the yellows and. There are some, um, issues with certain colors, um, that fade over time fairly quickly. Was it yellow? Was it yellow? So we're gonna fix it by.
Purple.
Purple.
Yellow is fine. Purple, yeah, purple.
It's yellow, yellow, but we're working on the color scheme that, that identifies Bogota as a whole. So just wanna let you know that enter the band uniforms, we are discussing, we will meet on it. Just wanna make sure you, that you know that maybe we should look deeper into spending. Uh, that we know exactly what the future is gonna look like in the color scheme. Um. Okay, moving on to new business. Anyone with new business? Kennedy, you recovered that. Moving on to thirteen one. I'd like to open the floor to the hearing of the public. Do I have a motion to open the floor?
Motion.
Do I have a motion, Mr. Chavez? Do I have a second? Alvarez, sorry. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any member of the public who'd like to come up? You have to state your name.
Good evening, Danielle Fiddy, one seven eight large again. Council meeting parties aren't required to give their address, maybe because of Daniel's law, so I wanna think about that.
You repeat that, council?
During the council meetings, members of the public are told not to give their street address, possibly because of the Daniels law.
Oh, thank you.
So just maybe look into that. I'm happy to give my address, but they don't do that anymore at council meetings. I, I just wanna, um, relate to two comments I heard, shenanigans and political posts. I just wanna say that my comments here are coming from over twenty years of experience for trees for our town. I worked on getting this town Tree City USA certification for twenty years. I worked on getting our town, so, Stanford Jersey certification. And I see, I welcome that the schools worked getting into that program for ten years. I helped get a twenty, a forty thousand dollar grant for our town. And I don't think that's political. I don't think that's shenanigans. I don't think my interest in the environment, it's my, it's my profession is, is. Should have the statements that I had made to me this evening. I don't think that's, that's right or fair. I also wanna say that twenty-six trees as part of that grant were planted in the park. On the other side of the athletic fields behind the gazebo are twenty-six trees. And those trees were planted this year. So I'm just a little bit maybe annoyed, um, at the statements that were directed at me this evening. Because they're just very unfounded and very unfair. Good evening.
Thank you. Yeah.
So Daniel's law dealt with, I think, the, um, the situation where someone's a, a judge, a retired judge. Law enforcement, law enforcement, retired prosecutor, prosecutor, retired, relate people married to those people. So there was a situation where we did have a speaker who was in one of those categories. We, you know, we could have them waive, uh, given their address. So it's, it's a good point, though. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coben. What you do recognize is that no matter how much of a professional you are, we're, we're all gonna be making mistakes or differences of opinion. And there's always some sort of bias statement. I did not direct anything directly to a person. However, the entire conversation just had a professional arborist. And we're not talking about the Z-bones or anything on his side, that we are referring to a specific site. We're discussing a specific project. And the arborist who you stated you trust and knew and from the borough stated that nothing has been done. However, and I think I can go back, that there's, it needed to be taken care of. And the words exactly were somewhere in the sort of abandoned. With that being said, and that's what I was referring to. So I'm not pinpointing here, I'm saying, hey, there's a lot going on. We're all trying to do our best as this, this board as a whole, and it's being diminished by people who think that. Somehow we're not paying attention to the same trees and reinforcing your efforts. That's, that's where that comes from. It's also somewhat annoying to know that we passed the referendum. That the borough project would have never been, I mean, they haven't gone to rec center, don't. And we're moving faster and, and, and liberty and all the requests. So that's where it's also frustrating for us. We're looking to move forward and the whole town forward as a whole. Um, anybody else?
Anthony Lopez?
Hello, uh, Anthony Lopez, uh. I just wanna say, yes, I agree. This is not easy. Change is gonna be good for the town. But, you know, whether I'm able to make one meeting or all of them. As a taxpayer and as someone who looks, wants the best for the town and someone who probably not like anybody in the room or very few. Who actually lives on the park, it is a big concern of, uh, for us that it's done properly. So if I've gotta ask four hundred times, how many trees? Because nobody said the right number the first time. I'm gonna ask four hundred times and you can tell me until we get the right answer and we decide what the right thing to do is. I agree, it's a field, but it's not just for children. Half of the year, there's nobody on there. And you know who's on there? Me and the rest of the neighbors who live on the park. So it's not a playground. It is a field and a track for adults as well. So let's please keep that in mind because kids are not. because kids are not out there in the snow, but I am when I walk around the track to do my exercise and so are the other neighbors. So take that into consideration. It's not just about kids. It's about the town.
So, uh, yes, and thank you for that and, and, and that is understood, but what our, our plan is, was to remove a few trees that were on the fields itself. Um, the arborist is making a recommendation to remove the other trees that we originally did not plan to take down because of their health. So I understand that the idea that um you're walking on the path, but she's also stating that those branches are capable of falling down on you while you're walking on these paths. That, that is what she has stated to us tonight.
Of course, of course, and.
So I don't think we're besides one or two trees that are on the fields of play that have to come down because they are on those fields of play. Every other tree in this report has a tree by tree. Um, analysis will be posted on our website tomorrow and you can go through it and they're tagged and you could walk the fields and you could see, but she had direct um notes to each field and, uh, each tree and why she feels they're not safe or, or are not going to uh stand much longer.
Of course, and you know, that is probably she seems, I, I don't know Liz, but obviously the town trusts her. So, so I have to understand that this is a very unique circumstance where one person is hired by two different parties for the same interests, right? So the, again, we are talking about a unique circumstance and I think what her report says would be great to see because it'll be facts as opposed to somebody saying all of them are dead or none of them are gone or only seven. If it's facts, let's look at it. And all I'm saying is that, you know, thank you. Um, just please keep in mind that adults use the park too.
Yes, and also with these parks, uh, with the walkway, we will be enhancing them with lights and also exercise equipment, natural outdoor exercise, exercise equipment that will be available to the public and uh solar lighting at night to walk the, the paths as well. So we are looking to do our best and we are going to add as many trees as possible.
Thank you. I have one more question. In reference to the light pollution. I know I brought it up the last time I was uh at a meeting. But uh, you know, I really would love to see that, uh, I know that it is an issue for many of us. Every, anyone there, anyone there is welcome to come back to the house and see that, you know, it, it will be a situation. So if we could just very clearly just be clear about what that means because it will affect our sleep. It will affect our, you know, our quality of life.
Well, the, the walk, the walking paths are, are not going to affect, that'll just be low level lighting when you're walking at night. The field lights will be on a timer, will be turned off at certain times. They're, they're not going to be kept on and all night. I imagine nine thirty, ten o'clock the latest in the summer if events are going on, but if events are not going on, the lights will not be on. And the lighting from my understanding is very specific and that they're able to really narrow down on the field. They're not wide open lighting. That, that, that you're not, the lighting projects in front of it specifically and not behind it.
Again, I look forward to all the changes and again, they're not easy, but you know, but I, I I know it's going to be a beautiful park at the end of the day.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Um.
Yeah.
Carmel?
There you go. I'm talking to the phone. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, Carmel Bernie, one sixty two East Fort Lee Road. Um, just a general question, maybe not for this time, but maybe looking forward. Um, I'm a member of the Board of Rec Committee. And at our last meeting, the gentleman who runs a soccer program during the summer months um that uses the fields. Um, obviously this summer, I guess the fields will be under construction. Um, has there been any talk with the county um or Hackensack to utilize one of their fields for the programs that usually run during the summer during the construction time?
It is something that we have talked about. We have not reached out to anyone specifically, but it is something that's on our radar that we, I guess we would have to work with the town as well, but we also have to relocate graduation this year for the first time if we can't hold it outdoors because the fields will be under construction. So we're hoping to work with the borough and see if we can get into uh maybe by the gazebo there if we can find a way to have the graduation there as well. So yes, these things are on our radar and hopefully we will have answers in the new year.
Okay, that's good to know that they're on the radar because people, you know, so the kids, like at least for the summer that they don't have to travel far if they want to keep the programs running, you know, the soccer programs, which all eventually feel um feed up into the high school program. So just want to make sure. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, there was one thing that I wanted to bring. I mean, today, I mean, yesterday, there was a lot of rain and a lot of towns flooded. Um, and I would tell you that Bogota was okay. And, and not to say the houses were okay, however, those fields were pretty good. So mother nature is very unpredictable. And I guess we'll say now, so in forty, fifty years from now, those folks who took those fields didn't think it through. Well, we thought as much as we can see for you know, for a side and it didn't flood, but some, I think, one year ago, we didn't even have as much as we did. So it's just a hit or miss. Uh, we're really trying adding some exercise um equipment around something we, we came up with to figure out how we can chip in there, you know, to, to help, to help again through. Again, it's something the borough, um, they're focusing on the rec. They couldn't, I don't think they could have ever done these fields. At least not for the next twenty, thirty years. We're doing it and we thank the taxpayer for that. We do thank, consider and trust. We're, we're trying to iron out as we go along. Susan Harper?
Yes. So um, I want to echo what Anthony said too. Um, there was a comment that says that the fields are for children and they're not for children only. I mean, there's lots of adults that are out there walking and, and running. Um, and this is of course a public park, a public taxpayer green acres park. Um, and when the board did um did present their uh referendum, it was a very, very high level concept. So the, the concept of pushing back on, you know, um, where were you and not speaking up is really, really, uh, I think not acceptable. Um, I've lived in Bogota now for, I think, about eighteen years. Uh, I think now the total, uh, along with the number of trees that will be taken down will be sixty six trees in that park. That's, this is a very sad day. Sixty six trees. If you're wondering, I think Frank, I think you were on the uh council at the time when they took down the trees and maybe you weren't, and if I, if you weren't, I apologize. Uh, when they took down the tr- uh, the trees, um, just whole, you know, where there's wholesale, there's a whole lawsuit about that um for the parking lot, right where the baseball field is. So um if you're wondering where we're coming from, we're coming from a place where we moved into the neighborhood and there was a park, a park with lots of big, beautiful trees that stopped light coming in from hitting our homes. And now you're talking about adding solar lights, which of course will not go off. And so we'll be seeing probably that too hitting our homes. Um, and so those things need to really now be taken into significant consideration. Any lighting now, because if you're going to be taking down thirty three trees or whatever, how many trees it is now. Um, that's going to impact the value of our homes. And I've had to sit there and hear things over the years uh about recycling centers and other sorts of things about how it impact the value of people's homes. And this needs to be taken in consideration too, that we live here, this is our homes and this is really going to possibly impact the value of our homes. Thank you.
Thank you. You want all? Alright. So can I have a motion called hearing of the citizens?
Motion.
Mr. Chavez, do I have a second? Ortega? Alright, motion. So before, there's no executive session.
Yeah.
Um.
I'd like to say something before the adjournment.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna thank you, John. Um, John Ortega, who served on our board for three years. Uh, my experience with John has been a very unique one. He's probably one of the youngest elected uh persons in Bogota. Uh, I've traveled in the back of history. I have seen one in the twenty three, twenty four, right? Yeah, twenty seven, I'm right, right, twenty three? Yeah, something like that. John brought perspective to us. Um, in a time where, um there was a climate that, that needed to appall the youth, that needed to hear their voices. And it had nothing to do with color or background or culture or destiny. It had everything, anywhere. Uh, the youth is encouraged. And, and that moment, you stepped up to the plate. Um, I hear the complaints. I hear uh, my brother, this is a really lot of things you've done. At twenty something, you could have been out there partying. You could have been out, I'm sure you've done something. You could have done that and be here on a Tuesday uh over and over again and, and, and you've questioned me, you know. How can people not have the sight? Well, you see it, right? You have it and you, and you, you gave me stories with Mr. Kennedy as your, as your VP. And principal, he gave me stories back there when he wasn't so much of a good kid. And, and the thing is, he let me see something of the student body that we focus on in Bogota today. I personally want to thank you. I'll, I'll, I'll make it up to you. I, I think time is fine. We've been on the holidays. Thank you for serving. Thank you for speaking up. Thank you for going through all this because most people who have fifty years of Bogota don't dare to take that seat, run for office, work the floors and do what you did and that's extremely honorable. And I know today you're only twenty six or twenty seven, I think you're just there. And bless you, my brother. Go on, do big things. Talk about this. Go kick some rear because, because of people like you you know, is why we do this. Bogota is gonna have sound waves when people hear that you graduated from here. Then you do your thing and then you were a board member. That's very few people who do it. People do it for selfish reasons and you did it because you wanted to give back to a place that you were neutralizing, that you built it, you knew. And I want to thank you personally, brother. It's been a, it's been a wonderful journey. Um, I hope you come back around. Go have fun because this isn't so much fun all the time. So go have fun, build your youth, come back with a good remedy and I thank you, I really do. Thank you so much. Thank you, Frank.
That's exactly in the same vein that I wanted to, John, I appreciate what you did. It takes a lot for anyone to do this and for to be twenty three years old, I remember asking you, you sure, you should, you know, you're sure this is what you want to do? And you said you were and you came with a level of intensity that many people twice your age don't share. And i- it was a pleasure to, to go out and introduce you to the public. It was a, a overwhelming pleasure to be elected, first African American person to be elected in this town. Up again, running with the youngest person. I remember that night, we felt like, whoa, what can't we do? And I, I, I challenge you to say that, what can I do? Whatever you want is what you can do. You're a good man, John Ortega, and it was a pleasure to serve with.
Sure, I get chills. And I will just remind, when John ran, he was the second highest vote getter.
Yeah.
And, and that told you, the youth spoke up. I think you got, I've looked back, you got more votes as a second tier than anyone ever got for the board
Yeah.
of education. My brother, you gave a voice to a bunch of youth. It didn't happen. You need to be proud of that. You need to speak on that and one day just come back and show up. We're going to receive you in open arms as least, as least as long as I'm here, bro. Appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
You say, Kenny, it's been fun, right? He'll remind Kennedy because you have, that's what they're the kids. And it just allows us to do the job in a different way, John. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. And welcome to Ms. P. Welcome.
Thanks so much.
Yes, I'm good. He wants to say something. I wanted to thank uh all of you as well. Um, it's been, you know, uh, Monica's arrived for me uh these past three years. Um, you know, and there's been, you know, there's things I could have done better, there's things I could have done worse at the same time. Uh, but you know, it was a learning experience for me. It was a, a very pivotal point of my life. Uh, pivotal point of growth, um, mat- maturation and uh elevation in general. And I wanted to thank everybody involved. There's a lot of moving parts in this and I saw a lot of development over the years, me being here. Me working with uh Mr. Kennedy, uh, superintendent, it was Ervah. Uh, Liz, uh, the fellow board members, attorneys as well. Um, and you know, it was, this was a, uh, once in a lifetime experience for me. Possibly coming back, like you said. Uh, I, and busy as you said, I, I do have a lot of things doing, uh, doing right now. Uh, big things coming. Uh, so I want to thank you for motivating me on that as well. And you know, once I get things I, I'm in order, uh, perhaps I even, uh, you know, have a, have a second go at this because this is definitely an experience that I encourage everyone to do. Obviously not everybody can, but uh, a lot more people should come up and, and do things like this and do things where it's for the betterment of the town, the betterment of well, you could, you could say think bigger, the earth in general, because we are a really small town, but if you really think about it, we are making a difference. And it's a difference that uh that goes with being a part of, you know, being like, we're, we're small towns, but we're part of earth. Uh, earth is really big, but we, we, we do our thing and I, I just want to thank everybody. This was uh, great. This is very exciting for them. Thank you.
We go on break of our board.
That's what I'm telling you.
Well, again.
Just want to uh wish everyone a happy holidays and a healthy new year and looking forward to twenty twenty four. We have a lot of things going on in twenty twenty four, so just happy and healthy and enjoy time with loved ones.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, my part. Happy holidays for those and um have fun, enjoy your family. Food and talk is a big lesson. Uh, don't take any minute, any person, any step, any role. Granted, you have been part of this all, you've been part of quite a large organization, we've already seen in a very long time, brother, so you know, just don't take anything for granted. I've made a lot of friends, you're one of them. And happy holidays to everyone who had a motion to adjourn. Second, Mr. Ortega. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Have a good evening, everyone.